So what we're doing here today is a, what I call a startup business engineering work session for a company for Kate McCaffrey and Ralph Kraus, who are from My Path to Learning. My Path to Learning, Kate, you want to tell us a little bit about what My Path to Learning does?
It is an AI software to help children learn how to spell and do math facts efficiently, and provide teachers with analytic data to meet the needs of all learners.
Sort of monthly model that rolls up quarterly over here. And they did it, um, they did it in, you know, where the, where the months are on the rows and the, the metrics are along the top. And that, that typically doesn't match a financial statement which shows, which shows months across the top. And so then it breaks down into customer types, tutors and average revenue per customer, private leads and average revenue per customer, and public leads and average revenue per customer. In general, I have a really simple, oversimplified way of looking at business that focuses exclusively on unit economics. And, uh, and also when we started, like most companies, My Path to Learning hadn't been doing their books at all. And they're just looking at their bank statement and seeing how much cash they have, and then doing a bunch of stuff and seeing what works. They've got a handful of customers that have paid them so far. And they're going through this program to try to, to try to accelerate, you know, the go-to-market strategies and also position themselves to potentially raise capital so they can grow faster. All that's true? Okay, so the first thing we did is set up QuickBooks. And people sort of ignore it because it, you know, you know, the very, very beginning, you don't necessarily need it. But in a startup business engineering work session, what I'm doing here is I do want to start with real data. And I do want to make a model such that I can update it with real numbers when they actually happen. And so that's what we've got here. This, this model looks like this. It takes, it connects to every, all your business applications. If you have Google Analytics, if you have a sales funnel, we connect to that like HubSpot. If you're an e-commerce business, we connect to Shopify. If you have a website and you use Google Analytics, we connect to that. If you bill out of Stripe, we get out of, we pull data from that. And then we integrate this data in a way that puts this data, all the key metrics, through the unit economics of your business, which we're going to cover, into a, in, above the income statement and the balance sheet, monthly, quarterly, and annually. And then we use that, use the unit economics in our weekly activities to forecast revenue growth and cash. And then we set performance metrics and goals quarterly, monthly, pull it up quarterly, and then divide by 13 and manage it weekly. So like a key question here for you guys would be, as we're using this to run the business, is like, how many conversations with new leads did you have last week? And that's the number that starts like basically the top of your funnel. And every business can be modeled in the same way. And I have 370 companies that all have these identical financial models that are based on every business having an audience. From that audience, you get a lead, you try to convert that lead into a payment from a first-time customer and keep them coming back. At first, I don't break down customer types. The only customer types I have is did they pay you for the first time or another time? New versus repeat customer. And it doesn't matter whether in your case, they're a tutoring agency, or a private person, or a public school. At this point, it's just a payment from a new customer and a repeat customer. Later, as you get bigger, we can look at some of the dynamics between them. Some businesses like direct-to-consumer will have a direct-to-consumer channel and a wholesale channel. And we'll do customer roll-forwards for each of those channels. But basically, in your business, you're still selling the same thing. So it's one roll forward and one way to bill, one average revenue per customer that can change over time with a very small number of metrics. From these, from this customer roll forward, we can determine your unit economics. And from, and we do that each period cumulatively. So unit ec, and then we do this, basically, this begins a feedback loop. And feedback loops are what makes systems stable and make your forecast better. And 52 feedback loops a year are better than 12. I don't know why accountants wait until, you know, March 20th to close the books on February and then compare March to February, because March is 10.7% longer than February when it's not a leap year. So there's no reason to compare months ever. And the right data here is like, basically, when you put the right data in front of an empowered team, they get better. This tool is meant to focus you on your key assumptions that actually will drive your results. And if you focus on other stuff, that's going to be frustrating or sad, or you're going to fail. Okay? And so when you get the right data in front of an empowered team, they get, they get better. What's the right data? The right data is unit economics. Now, I look at unit economics this particular way. Again, and it's based on the top, all the data at the top of your integrated financial model that I'm going to show you. So you're going to do some marketing spend, some ad spend. You might have a sales team that you pay, you might pay referral fees. All that goes into your, at your CAC, which is basically your total spending on customer acquisition, divided by your new customers, that's customer acquisition cost. Now, purchases per customer is a funny one. And we can talk about churn rate when we look at your churn rate and things like that. But then these are the metrics that go up on the top of every single one of the 370 financial models in every different industry. I know this works just for the record here, because with this method, I built 500 million dollar companies in a row. I started at this company in like 1997, and this company in 1999, and this company in 2003, and this company in 2006. Then I built a portfolio of companies from which I've had 19 exits. Then General Assembly, we sold to a DECO for 420 million. And then I built this hundred million dollar fund that also runs on the same software that connects data from every business application and builds these integrated financial models. So everybody who doesn't have experience building financial models builds things like this that are in some cases overly detailed, in some cases not detailed enough. And number one. Number two, they're not connected to real data and they can't be, right? Because you're, you know, like, you're going to start getting data from these systems in a particular way. And having this many, this much experience building these models, I know how we're going to get data from each one of your systems. So, uh, that's basically where we are. So I used your assumptions here. You know, I used some of the things you have here to imagine what this would look like. And then I looked at some of the assumptions that you have here. And then I basically started, uh, and now let me just zoom out so you can see this whole thing. So this, here's the months. And this is like November 2025 to December 2027. Here's the quarters, the fourth, fourth quarter 2027. And then here's the years through 2027. This is the, this is your audience and your new and repeat customers. And I'll just zoom in a little bit here. Audience and new and repeat customers and an average revenue per customer. And then you could think about teacher users and students per teacher. I didn't do that, but that could be, that is something that I would want to do. But I didn't see your student, you know, uh, number of students per customer and those kinds of things. So I did the whole thing just based on your average monthly revenue per customer. And I'll show you some of the assumptions that go into that. And then, and then there's your unit economics section. And then basically, I show a P and L here. And so just out of the gate, and I don't know how close this was to what you had. I, we built a model that shows you getting to about a million in revenue in 2027. And it shows you needing, um, in this case, if I was going to look at a safe note here, I don't think I put it in yet, but it looks like if you raised, how much are you thinking of raising?
500K.
Yeah, when?
As soon as possible.
Okay, so let's say 500K here in February 2026. So I put, notice what happens here. This 500K, watch what happens to, oop, where'd it go? Okay, it is here. Sorry, this one is up one, that's why. I'm gonna move this down one. Okay. So now, see your cash balance? Your cash balance sort of peaks out, 600,000. Like, this is like the max, you're probably going to need 675 for now. But let's just put in a $500,000 raise here in February. And so you can see that immediately drops cash onto the balance sheet. Okay, and then, uh, the net income from up here comes down into the net income on the balance sheet. And I simplify this by saying, this is, this is basically your cumulative losses. This is your cumulative equity investments. And a safe note, people can argue whether it's a liability or an equity investment. Doesn't matter for this purpose. Okay, so that's, so at the end of the day, we're going to have some assumptions about your revenue growth and some assumptions about your expenses. They're going to drive to a cash requirement. And that's what this model does. Then it also, in this case, happens to be connected to, and here's, here's your company on our platform. And it has a connection to your QuickBooks. And, uh, and it, so I'm seeing every deposit that comes in, so it's connected. And every night, it happens to run this set of data tasks that help me see whether or not the bookkeeping is being done properly and keeps the model updated. And so that's what, that's what this system does. And so when I come over here, I go to the toolkit index and I can go to bookkeeping quality. And I, and this is like, I can't trust anything if your bookkeeping quality isn't good. And it basically, we haven't reconciled these bank accounts really ever. I think we caught it up, and you know, this is something that's pretty easy to do, to catch it all up. And for this purposes, exactly right now, this is okay. And it doesn't affect our ability to do the work. And then if you had receivables, these are other aspects of the accounting that we check. And one of the interesting ones is revenue by customer. It turns out you're getting these via PayPal, so I don't see the customer names. A key part of all, of the ability to be able to do this is getting access to wherever your order table is. And just like every business has an audience, and it tries to convert that audience into a payment from a first-time customer, every business has an order table, a place where all the orders are. And then I just basically look at the total orders and the total unique names, and that's sort of your purchases per customer. And so at this stage, um, I think I just want to chat with you about, I noticed that you had some assumptions in your monthly model about, about CAC. And you broke CAC down by the three different customer types. That's a mistake. And, and I used this example earlier, I don't think it made the tape. But I was, I did this startup business engineering work session for Trust and Will before it got its money from Techstars, for example. And now, since then, they've raised maybe 60 or 80 million dollars. And they, they spend, you know, more than a half a million dollars driving traffic to their website to sell products that range from $69 to 5,000. There's a bunch of detail in there that's unnecessary. All that I need to know is how many first-time customers and what was the average revenue per customer. So that's why I can basically ignore the difference between these different kinds of customers and just say, okay, you're going to do some marketing spend. And you're going to have a, and basically, what I, what I did in this case is you said you had 10 leads. I had 10 leads per month, growing at 3% a month until you get to 30 leads per month. And that's sort of what happens here. So that's like, with these two assumptions, you know, I'll highlight all these in blue because they're the only ones you need. Starting at 10 leads per month, grow at 3% a month until you get to 30. And that's what this formula does. And then you basically also over here told me that you, you get 10 tutoring leads in and you close two of them. So you have like a 20% closer rate. So that's, that's reflected here, right? 20% closer rate, 10 leads in, two, two contracts signed. Now, I don't think you're going to hit this in November, so we should change it to when it should actually start. Like, probably you want to start in March after you, uh, after you raise the money, right? Something like that. Assumptions I need are what's your CAC? How does your CAC change over time? How many leads do you get? How many do you close? And then I just assume they turn into a customer the month after you close them.
Perfect.
And so, and so now, you know, and at this stage, and then I have an average revenue per customer. So I've got two customers that seem to have paid you about $250 per month. So I just started you at 250, and I grew you at 10% a month until you get to 2,400. Okay, and that, that takes into account a lot of the things we were doing over here as you bring on bigger clients over time. But it really oversimplifies it in a way that might be confusing for you at first. If I go and, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna collapse all this away. And now let's just go look at these years. So, uh, this number of new customers in 2025, yeah. In 2025, I, you know, I showed a new customer showing up here. Maybe these aren't real, I don't know if they're real or not. But basically, basically, I think you told me I have a couple of customers. So this would say you're going to add 20 new customers in 2026. Is that a reasonable goal?
Yes.
Do you want them up higher or lower?
We can keep it at 20 right now.
Okay, and then I've got the average revenue per customer growing from about 225 this year to about 550 next year.
About right.
And, and that's a thing, you can change it. We can grow it faster, we can limit it lower, those different kinds of things. Maybe in 2027, this might be a little high? What do you think your average revenue per customer will be in 2027? I mean, it's sort of a random number.
I mean, it depends on, right now, we're trying to price it slow. And then as we grow, increase pricing models.
Yeah, okay, so maybe what we want to do is add more customers in 2027 at a lower average revenue per customer?
Yeah.
Okay, so see, that's, it's funny how meta I'm being compared to the way you built this set of assumptions. Now, let's just say, how, so maybe this is like doubling the new customer acquisition in 2027? Is that good enough, or do you want to triple it?
I would hope to triple it, but we can keep it doubled. The goal is, the goal is to continue to sell.
So what, in order, in order to triple it, there's like, what can you do? You can either spend more on marketing, or you can lower your customer acquisition cost. So I'm going to lower your customer acquisition cost again, just by doing one, one number, this change factor number. So you had a monthly model that had assumptions on a different tab. What this is, is like every month, I'm gonna, every month when you close your books, you're going to know how much you spent on marketing, and you're going to know how many new customers you got. And there is going to be a CAC calculation. When, like in my business, if I showed you my weekly accounting business, it took, and I'm just going to jump over here to new and repeat customers, right? Look at this, it took me four, two years to get to 37 customers. And then we added 40 customers last quarter, right? And so, and there's an average revenue per customer. And then we break it down weekly and do all these other things associated with it. But, all right, so now let's just say it grows a little bit more slowly. So watch this number here, 37, as I reduce the rate of growth. I'm going to go from one old, basically this says, grow my customer acquisition cost by 5% a month. Well, what if it just stays flat? And now why didn't this change? That's an interesting, that's an interesting thing that just happened here. Oh, because these, oh, I have the leads growing this way. Okay, so I'm going to reverse this. I'm going to base this on, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hard, I'm going to flip this around so you can decide like how much to spend on ads here. And then, so this is going to be, and then this'll, I'm just going to drop these up here. Okay, so now, we basically say we're going to spend about 2,800, 101, 103, okay, 105. So now this is showing all that. And now my average revenue per customer, let's say it goes down 98% to $1,000. And let's go see, now I'm going to, instead of doing it this way, I'm going to flip it around and say this equals ad spend forecast times 1,000 divided by CAC forecast. Okay, so that's where this comes from. So this is, this, oh, those are leads, I don't want to do leads, I want to do the closes. Let me do that again. Ad spend forecast times 1,000, because that's in thousands of dollars, divided by the CAC forecast. Okay, and that says we get three customers. And then by the end of 2027, we get 13 customers. So maybe this is a little steep now, right? So your new customers at 107 is probably a little too much. Makes sense?
Correct.
So although 40 customers next year, is that too many? That would be four a month?
That would be the goal.
Okay, so let's set that as a goal. Average revenue per customer of about 559, or do you want to soften that up?
Soften.
Okay, so down here, it starts at 259. And I'll just, let's just say, let's just say it starts at two.
I don't know, $100 a month, what are you thinking?
Uh, we can start it at 100. And then it doesn't need to grow at 10% per month. This is 300, it could grow at 5% per month. Uh, and so now we're getting, adding 35 customers at 146, that seems a little light. I think you're over 100. I think you're probably closer to 200. So 35 new customers next year, $300 is going to get you to 59,000 in revenue next year. Does that, that doesn't feel great, does it?
No.
So how much were you thinking you would do in your first year? These are MRRs.
Yeah, I think that we're looking at coming in at a, as low as we can to gain traction, but not break the bank.
As low as we can on what?
On running our, our, as, running our website, but keeping it at continuous growth, more users, more, to gain more traction in the long term. So we're looking at $5 a kid. It's not much in.
Mm-hmm. Um, okay, so, so really, when you say per kid, that, that does say like students, maybe I'm going to do students per customer.
Yeah, it's students per customer. And we have a couple of different price models we're running.
Well, at the end of the day, a couple of different price models still degenerates into one number.
Okay.
An average number. So the students per customer, and then there's an average revenue, average revenue per student, right?
Yep.
Okay, so let's just go and think about students per customer initially is, you, where do you want to start students per customer?
$5 a month.
Okay, no, students per customer. It's like 30, 80, 100, based on school.
100, I guess, 100 is what we're looking at.
Okay, but in this case.
Well, 30, 30, I guess 30 students per, if we have 80 students coming in at $5 a month is our last deal.
That's 400.
Yep.
Okay, so 80 students, students per customer is going to start out at 80. And do you think that'll grow over time?
Hopefully that'll expand to another school.
And how, like, students per customer, how high do you think that'll get? It could get as high as like 300, if you have to get public schools?
Yes.
Okay, so then I'm just going to use the same change factor limiter equation. So this is just say, grow my students per customer by 3% per month until you get to 300. Makes sense?
Does.
And then we just pull this over, and I'm just going to highlight that and collapse that so I can see all these like this, 82, okay, cool. Average revenue per student, let's just keep it at, I'm, I'll, I'll put the change factor limiter stuff in here, but I'll, I'll keep it at 5%. I'll keep it, keep it at $5 per customer. Okay, so then that would mean your average monthly revenue per customer, and you're going to have an average monthly revenue per student. But, so now it's total number of students, right, is the question here. So total students. So right now, like total students would be your active paying customers. And I think I can do total orders times students per customer. And sometimes I do named ranges here, so I'll go students per customer, which makes your formulas easier to do. So my total students equals total orders times students per customer. And there's 320 students, right? And, but at $5, that's going to be a really high average revenue per customer, isn't it? So something doesn't seem right about the 80. Somebody cannot mumble and share.
He's trying to get at the server.
I'm saying, it was, sorry, I had to mention to her is that we've had different price models. We've added servers where if they wanted to have their own private server, which is quite what Canada, a few other ones want to keep their data private, we're adding servers instead of look, so you have a server cost of saying $100 a month, but we'll lower the kid values per month on the server.
I think, I think at this stage, given how little you know about what we're actually, what is actually going to happen, I, I think I can ignore all of this part and just go to, you've got an average monthly revenue per customer right now. You've got two or three customers that pay you less than $1,000. So it's like $300 per customer. So I'm going to use that as signal. And then I'm going to grow that 5% a month until you get to $2,400 a month. And in this case, it only gets to 677. And it really just comes down to, is this good enough to show investors? Maybe not. So now I want to, um, I probably, what do we want to aim for revenue next year and the year after?
We want to increase our revenue net worth, um, to, to be making at least a significant amount in the company. So that's what we're looking for, is how do we best price the product to meet the needs of the kids, but also to make money as a company?
Okay, so I'm showing 40 new customers in 2026 and 107 new customers. Well, actually, it'll be 35 and 100 new, 35 new customers in 2026 and 100 new customers in 2027.
Yep.
And the average revenue per customer here only ends up as about $500. So maybe I should increase that again. Now, the average revenue per customer gets to $1,300. And so this would mean next year you do about 97, $100,000 of revenue. And the year after that, you do about 1.5 million. That seems like really high growth, so I'm going to soften this back to 107. And there, 800, and let's, let's aim for a million next year, right? So 108. There you go. This, you know, in the, in the five businesses that I took from single digits to 100 million in revenue um, here, they all went like 1, 2, 4, 8, 20, 40, 60 kind of thing, right? So it takes a little bit longer to get to your first million.
I agree with that, yes.
This seems pretty reasonable here. Okay, so at overtime, you'll count the number of students and your revenue per student's going to matter and stuff like this. But at a very high level at this stage, I'm just looking for you to add 35 customers next year, right? And then it's just a question of, you know, here's, here's your goals for the quarters next year as well, right? Can you see the quarterly?
Yep.
Okay, cool. And so we can get rid of all that, and we can get rid of 2027. So adding nine customers at $318 per customer in Q2 seems like a reasonable goal.
Okay.
Okay, um, in theory, then, you would show that number here weekly and, and, and then start managing to that. And then it would be, all right, well, how many leads in do you need to get that? If you have a 20% close rate, then you would need to get, uh, then you would need to get this divided by 20. There you go. And then these would be like that. Okay, so you'd need that many leads. Makes sense?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Then in your assumptions, you had 80% gross margins. And I keep that really simple too. Right here, I just go 80% gross margins. And so your COGS is just, is just 20% of revenue. Okay? And later, you know, later you'll, there'll be merchant fees and there'll be post, you know, you might put hosting costs in there or not, you know, different things like that. Then I noticed that there's really, you had two components of ad spend. You had your, you had your sales and marketing expenses that didn't include CAC. Okay? So what I did here is I put your CAC-related spend here, which just comes from up here. Makes sense? And then I put, you know, I put like 8,000 a month. And maybe we don't want to start it until you actually get the money in and you start spending other marketing expenses. And then those grow a little bit until they get to 15,000, okay?
Yes, I like how the data is shifting as you're moving targets.
Yeah, that's right. Now, the important part, this is a really, you know, a thing that I do that nobody else does is, is I, is I put the unit economics above your income statement. And then I break apart a new line on a P and L. Everybody knows that P and L has revenue and COGS and gross profit, and then sales, marketing, and then G and A, and then net income. Well, I add a contribution line. And so contribution is your gross profit less all your sales and marketing expenses. This is the engine of growth. Below contribution, you have your engineers that build product and you have, um, really, it's this sentence, and I think it's in the book, chapter 14, um, that there's only two kinds of people in a company. There's people who work in the contribution engine and people who work on the contribution engine. Okay, the people who work in the contribution engine service customers directly, or sell and maintain them. Everybody else works on the contribution engine. And that's people like me. I instrument the contribution engine. You oversee the contribution engine. You staff the contribution engine and you finance the contribution engine. Okay, so it's a different way to think about an org chart of a business. Does that make sense? So you have, and the trick here is you have to be contribution positive before you can be profitable. Okay, and so this says, when you get to about 25,000 a month at this customer acquisition cost, then you can be contribution positive. And eventually, your contribution has to cover your total operating expenses. And that happens in this case, like late 2027, when you hit about a million run rate revenue, that's when you turn profitable according to this set of expenses that I guessed. Okay? So now we've got, we've set goals for ad spend and new customers and CAC. and CAC. And then we've set goals for an average revenue per customer, and we've set a goal for gross margin. And then now we can see when we get contribution positive, and then the rest is really simple. And, um, instead of like what you guys did, is you were just like, I have R and D expenses. Okay, well, to me, like R and D expenses are going to show up maybe in like software development contractors, so I just put some there. Okay, so inside each one of these lines, you might pay yourselves five thousand a month as co-founders, you might pay some other people something, and you can just type numbers here. This is your expense budget. And then I just put, you're going to have some hosted applications. I just put a thousand in a month there, and you can type any number you want here. And, and you notice like, um, in this, in the past here, like these, like this, this, this is coming directly off your income statement. So your income statement here is being pulled in from QuickBooks. And this is money, this is money you've actually received, and this is money you've actually spent, okay? And so over time, this gets more and more informative. And it gets updated. So if I flip over to the weekly accounting model, for example, you know, all of this history is pulling right off my income statement. This is just a formula that pulls it from the income statement. So I've got all this history. And that is what I mean by a, it looks like this. So I'm using unit economic as the unit economic history to drive assumptions. Then I keep improving them weekly, and then that helps me forecast the income statement in the balance sheet. Okay? So that, the rest of this is really just you guys thinking through who you're going to pay. This is, yeah, you guys thinking through who you're going to pay and when, and how much you're going to pay them. So like, for example, I just put in, um, you know, you might, but you're going to have some legal expenses, you're going to have accounting and tax expenses, you're going to have some hosted applications. And you can, you can actually name these people. You might say, we're going to pay Ralph, right? That kind of thing. And later, later, we make headcount models and things like that once you get big. But when you're small, it doesn't really matter. And so I just said, well, basically, you're going to have, you're going to have operating expenses of twenty to forty-five thousand dollars over this period. Plus your acquis, you know, your ad spend expenses. And so that says you're going to need, you know, that says you're not going to get to profitability until here, and five hundred thousand isn't quite enough. Right? And so, but you might raise, you might raise, you might increase the safe another two hundred thousand here in twenty twenty-six. And then that would be enough to keep you.
Yeah, we were looking at seven fifty potentially. Yeah.
Seven fifty when?
I don't know.
Yeah, okay.
Increasing it.
Yeah, so. Yeah, get this plus two fifty.
Yep.
But you get the idea.
I do.
And that, so now you've got unit, now let's go look at your unit economics here just for a second to kind of wrap it all up. Because this, when you, what I know is that when, you know, two things about this. When I put the right data in front of an empowered team, they get better. That's thing one. And when I look at unit economics very early inside a company, they're more li, and they focus on them, they're more likely to be successful. And when I, when I go full-time, you know, and pick them based on their unit economics, like four times in a row, I picked companies at a million or two million in revenue that went to a hundred million in revenue just based on their unit economics. That's a crazy thought, like the fact that I was able to repeatedly do this even before I understood what I was doing, and it's because I'm a sonar engineer, not an accountant. And what I'm trying to embed on, embed in you is that your unit economics really matter. And so here is your ad spend or whatever your marketing spend, and here's the CAC which comes from above. Then there's this lifetime gross profit, average monthly revenue per customer. Let's go look at those. Cust, oh, the customer life is missing. In this case, in this case, I've got your customer life at a hundred percent. Here's a funny thing about customer life. Let's just say your customer life is two years or three years. You want to say something like that?
Typically, three contracts.
Thirty-six months.
Yeah.
So your churn rate at a thirty-six months equals one over one divided by one minus equals one minus one divided by thirty-six. That's a really funny equation. Um, but it works. Basically, if you're, if you're a funeral home and your churn rate is a hundred percent, what's your customer life? One month. So one over a hundred percent is one month. If you're, if you're, if your customer life is two months, your churn rate is fifty percent. If your customer life is five months, your churn rate is twenty percent. If your customer life is ten months, your churn rate is ten percent, right? So if I typed in ten months right here, it would give me ten percent churn, which is ninety percent repeat rate. So that's why I can just type that in and say, this is, you're going to have a thirty-six month customer life. That's fine. So when we come down here, that means our lifetime gross profit. And again, I'm gonna, I'm going to go flip over to my, my, uh, unit economic picture. Where'd it go? Yeah, here. Okay. So I'm looking at lifetime gross profit. The, it's funny, it's funny, lifetime gross profit ends up being basically an approximation of, um, of your contribution line. Okay, so in this case, in this case, our lifetime gross profit goes from five thousand to forty thousand. Now, why does it go so high? And it goes so high because your average monthly revenue per customer goes so high, and your customer life is still the same, right? So lifetime revenue per customer is just your average monthly revenue times your customer life. And then you multiply this by your eighty percent gross margins, and that's how you get to those numbers. So there's, this is each period, and then here's cumulatively. So this is, by the end of this time, you'll have spent three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars to acquire a hundred and thirty-seven first time customers. Okay, so your average CAC is going to be about twenty-eight hundred there. And then your purchases per customer is going to be, in this case, seven point eight. That's because you're adding a lot of customers at the end. So when you add a lot of customers, that weighs it down from the overall average, because they haven't had a chance to be there that much. But you can see this just keeps going up over six, seven, eight, and that's just going to keep going up. And then our average order value here, again, let's see, cumulative revenue and cumulative orders. How did, okay, you know what I didn't do? Does revenue connected down here? Let me make sure it is. Yeah, gross sales. Okay, so that's where it is. And then, yeah, so here's, here's gross revenue. So then gross profit, why isn't gross profit coming out so high? These shouldn't be that high. Average gross margin, cumulative revenue and cumulative gross profit. Huh, okay, let me get rid of these numbers in the past. I don't think these numbers are quite right until they get to here. So we'll start the cumulatives here. Um, there's your eighty percent gross margins. Here's your average order value again. Um, and, and so then lifetime gross profit cumulative, and I gotta multiply this one by a thousand. Yours, yours is going to be pretty high. This is a very high kind of return on customer acquisition cost. It's almost too high, is my guess. And, um, but for now, for now, that's kind of okay, because uh, you're, you're spending about a thousand dollars to get a customer that stays thirty-six months and pays you two ninety-four. So your unit economics are very good to start. And then as you get a little more data about that, it's going to help you tune the unit economics to make the forecast better. All that makes sense?
Yes.
Um, so, you know, in order, you know, you know, aft, after you raise the money, you know, and I think at this stage, I can keep this whole thing connected and updated. You can, I can help you walk it, I'll be, you know, if you get to an investor and you're going to present them your numbers and the detail behind them, I'd be happy to join you on that and, and help, right? And, and then the idea is, look, at the end of the day, we just want to do your books and help you with this model. Um, and, and this is, this, this is, if you showed somebody, if you showed an investor this, they would say that's nice. But if you show an investor this, they're going to say, okay, I've got a whole, they know what they're doing.
Yeah, I think you made a very complex task, very easy to digest. So I really appreciate the data sheets. I think they're amazing. And then real-time data, you know, it's not projections, it's real.
That's right. So, um, yeah, I think that's for him, so everybody can grab, attempt it and then use it this way. And, um, yeah, so you know, Kate, I'm here, you know, you have my number, you have my email, you want to set up another time? Uh, just let me, I think you've got something really interesting here. I'm really into the education space. And, um, kind of bringing that, bringing AI into this to help kids learn. I think everything's going to change about education, and I think you're cutting edge of that.
Thank you, John, for your time today, and we appreciate your support. I'm looking forward to seeing you. We're going to be at graduation.
Yes.
I'm looking forward to seeing you in person at graduation, and I really appreciated the numbers that you did today. I think it was really helpful to educate me and the company, and you made a really, like I said, complex sheet look really easy to digest, so I appreciate that.